Good morning. I will call to order the January 14, 2022 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt is out of the office today and County Operations Officer Nancy Bush has been designated as the Acting County Administrator. Nancy Bush, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. First, to introduce our staff, today we have Tony Marinick here as Clerk to the Board, and we have Stephen Magcor as our County Council. Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
President.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, and good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Nancy.
Yes, thank you. So first, we have the first reading of an ordinance amending NCPRD Ordinance 042012, adopted May 10, 2012, establishing the adjusting of fees. We do have Stephen Magcor here, who is going to represent on this. And just as a reminder, this is something that Commissioner, I'm sorry, the County Administrator asked for, and there is a clause in here that you can't turn the fees over, but it would give you the option to do that. Stephen?
Thank you, Nancy. Morning, Commissioners. This is the first reading of an NCPRD ordinance change, and what it does, it vests decision-making authority with the Board for imposing fines and fees for the Parks District. In 2012, the Board had delegated that authority to the Parks Director and the County Administrator, and now both of them are saying that this should be consolidated with the Board because the Board decides all fines and fees in every other context. So what it does is a little change in the ordinance to say that this Board or its designee decides fines and fees for the Parks District. First reading, the second one will take place at a future date. I'm not entirely sure when that will be, but it has to be 13 days apart, and it would be effective immediately after that. Any questions?
Any questions for the Commissioners on this?
Mike, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I was just here if there were any questions.
I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I will take the first person in person, the person in person, yes. I don't see anybody wanting to testify on this. Tony, do we have anybody on Zoom?
If there is anyone who would like to testify on this hearing, please use the raise hand feature at this time. I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, I do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion on this item. See none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Commissioner Schrader has moved that we read the ordinance by title only. Commissioner Fisher has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? See none. Tony, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. The Clerk, please assign a number and read the ordinance by title only.
The ordinance will be numbered 042022, an Ordinance Amending Ordinance 042012, adopted on May 10, 2012.
Any further discussion on this matter, Commissioners? Okay, I see none. The second reading will be Thursday, July 28, 2022, at the Board's regularly scheduled business meeting at 10:00 a.m. I will now adjourn as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Nancy, what's next?
Commissioners, next, we have the first reading of an ordinance declaring a permanent ban on psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products. Today, we have Nate Boderman here for County Council, and Nate will introduce any guests that he may have.
Welcome, Nate.
Good morning. Glad to be here with you this morning. We do actually have two public hearings scheduled for you today, both of which relate to psilocybin regulation. And you'll recall, we had a policy session last week on just this topic. We have a couple different things that we'd like to accomplish with this hearing here this morning. First, because of timing and issues that I'll get into here in just a moment, we really do need to get direction from the Board as to whether it would like to refer a measure to the voters to opt out of certain categories of psilocybin licenses in business. And in order to make such a referral, the Board would need to adopt an ordinance. And adopting an ordinance normally requires two readings with public hearings associated with each, which then allows for a referral to the voters, which would make the final decision. The voters would make the final determination as to whether to opt out at the upcoming November 2022 general election. So the hearing today is just the first in a series of what's really a multi-step process to potentially move forward with some form of opt-out. So that's just framing sort of what the direct ask is of the Board today. But the other goal of the hearing this morning is to make sure that the Board has the information that you need to understand, really, the subject matter of what you're being asked to regulate, right? We heard at your session last week that you wanted to hear from individuals that had particular expertise on the medical side in the medical field, related to questions about research and what's known and what's not known about the safety and efficacy of psilocybin. So to those ends, I wanted to introduce a couple of individuals joining us here in the boardroom today. First will be a familiar face, and that's our county's Public Health Officer, Dr. Sarah President, so right behind me. And so in addition to serving as the Public Health Officer, I think it's important to point out that Dr. President continues to serve clients as a primary care physician, and directly related to the topic here at hand, has been appointed by the Governor to serve on the Oregon Psilocybin Advisory Board, which is the Board that was established by Measure 109 to review the available research and to make recommendations on potential requirements and guidelines for providing psilocybin services consistent with the provisions of Measure 109. I believe you'll be hearing from other Psilocybin Advisory Board members today, other licensed professionals during the public testimony comment, so please take advantage of these individuals, because in many ways and in many respects, they are on the front line of really implementing the work of what's been directed in Measure 109, and really are a tremendous resource. And so they are available for you to ask questions today, and we'll make sure that you have every opportunity to do so. I also want to introduce Angie Albee, who's the Manager of the Oregon Psilocybin Services Section, which is the new division within the Oregon Health Authority, responsible for implementing Measure 109. Since the direct question on the table for your consideration here today is really one of potential regulation, we wanted to make sure that we had our partners at the state here to help field any questions that you might have about how the state is really going about approaching its regulation and guidelines related to psilocybin. So before I turn it over to those individuals, just let me frame the issue to make sure that everyone here in the audience today and watching at home understands, again, what's being asked of the Board. So in November 2020, Oregon voters approved Measure 109, which is the Psilocybin Services Act statewide, and that Measure 109 passed 56 to 44 percent. In Clackamas County, it passed, but by a smaller margin, with just over 52 percent of the vote. Measure is now codified in Oregon Revised Statute, ORS 475A. And as I alluded to earlier, the Oregon Health Authority is the state agency that's in charge of implementing the new program. They've set up a new division, as I mentioned, and are working on rulemaking and working to really to stand up a new licensing and enforcement program to ensure that licensing can get underway January 2, 2020 through, so just really a few months away. Related to the purpose of the hearing today, Measure 109 created a mechanism, really, by which local government could adopt ordinances which would have the effect of prohibiting Oregon Health Authority from issuing service center and manufacturer licenses. So this process, which staff has really just been referring to somewhat casually as the opt-out, right? I think you'll hear that term, not only in our jurisdiction, but around the state, is, again, a multi-step process, which, as I explained earlier, which would require the Board to hold multiple public hearings, to pass an ordinance, and then to refer such an ordinance to the voters for final approval at the November 2022 general election. Again, today's hearing is the first step in that multi-step process. Jurisdictions all around Oregon are considering similar ordinances right now. The reason being is that, again, we only have a few more weeks before there's the deadline to refer any such ballot measure for the November 2022 election. As we discussed at our meeting last week, you'll have a couple options to consider in the context of the opt-out request. One option is a permanent ban on psilocybin manufacturing and service centers in the unincorporated areas of the county. The effect of this opt-out, if it is passed by the voters and is successful, would be to preclude these types of operators from operating licenses in the county and thus operating legally, at least until such time that such an ordinance would be repealed. The other option for your consideration is a temporary opt-out, which would be for a period of two years, as we have it currently drafted. And the basis for this type of opt-out would be a delayed implementation to allow time for the state's rules to be completed and to allow time for the psilocybin program really to take shape. As we discussed last week, the primary challenge that we have on the regulatory side is that the statewide rules are not planned to be finalized until just before the time that OHA is set to begin accepting license applications for both psilocybin manufacturing and service centers. So we don't have all the information that would normally inform a decision as to what regulations may be appropriate to impose here at the local level. Since we do have two closely related ordinances and public hearings for you today, my suggestion here this morning would be to accept public testimony on both the permanent ban and the temporary ban, at least the ordinances that we have before you today. And if a Commissioner proceeds and wants to make a motion on one or both, we can direct you at the time how to do that, or at least work with you on how to go about that process. It may just be that we have to feel our way out a little bit, but we'll get there. But again, these are so closely related, I think it's most efficient to handle all testimony on the topic, sort of in one public hearing, and we can do that. So I'll leave it there for now. I do want to make sure you have a chance to ask any questions of our guests, and I guess I'll just briefly start by turning it over to Dr. President, if you want to come up here and join me.
Commissioners, I'd like you to read further in your script where Nate Boderman has laid out, of course, an action. I want to thank our guests for coming and testifying on this and enlightening us on this. Commissioner Savis, do you have something?
Yeah, before we take any testimony, I would just like to ask Nate two clarifying questions. One, when we discuss the policy session, we have the option, you described, we have the option of banning basically not all aspects of psilocybin, I guess, distribution. But can you, for everyone's sake here, explain what a service center is?
I cannot. I cannot. And I think that is, you know, therein lies some of the difficulty, right? And I'll turn it over to Ms. Albee, you know, here in just a moment, because I think she might have a better perspective on that, maybe even Dr. President. But I guess from a legal standpoint, you know, what we're looking for is some rules and some guidance, right, at the state level, to help us understand, you know, how these types of operations will look, how they will be able to be licensed and regulated. And then from there, you know, the normal process would be for you, as the Board, to evaluate whether there are any additional, you know, reasonable time, place, and manner type regulations that you would choose to impose. But like I mentioned before, you know, we don't have that information. We're waiting for that, and it'll be available, at least draft form here shortly, but I can't sit in front of you today and produce at least any draft rules, so.
Isn't that, I'm sorry, Paul, go ahead.
My other, my second one was, the other question I had was, today, do we actually have to determine whether we're going to do a two-year ban or do a full, a permanent ban? And that's going to be hard to do if we don't have clear definition, right? So it kind of puts us in an untenable position of trying to make an educated decision. So can you just expand on that? Do we have to choose today which direction we go? Because I see the motions are crafted one or the other.
Yeah, so let me explain this in terms of what your deadlines are, right? And so, again, the mechanism by which to opt out is to refer this to the voters. And to make a referral to the voters, we have to have the materials over to the Clerk's office no later than August 19th. So I confirmed that date a couple days ago. But again, multi-step process, with the multi-step process we're dealing with here, it requires you to pass an ordinance, which typically requires two readings, you know, effectively two weeks apart, right? And then from that, at that point, if you do pass an ordinance, we'd get to work on crafting the ballot title language and the explanatory statement that would make it into the voter materials. And so, you know, we can do that in fairly short order, but again, you know, unless you make this an emergency and pass this by unanimous consent, we're at least looking at, you know, a two-week, you know, process to get this. And so when you start, you know, counting backwards from that August 19 deadline, really, we would need direction here in the next week or two from the Board to make that referral. And again, that's the deadline for the November 2022 election, right? And so if you want voters to be able to vote on that at this upcoming general election, that's the deadline that we're shooting for.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. I think those are good qualifying questions, and therein lies the problem. For instance, a definition of a service center, because the rules, rulemaking has not been established yet. So we're asked to approve something that we don't know what is. We don't know who's on first, we don't know who's on second. And my second thought just went right out of my head. So, Dr. President, please, welcome, and please introduce yourself and explain what your role is in all this.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you to Chair Smith, Commissioners. It's really nice to see you. Thank you for having me today. So I am Dr. Sarah President. I serve as the Clackamas County Local Health Officer. I am also a primary care physician over at the Beaver Creek Health Centers, where I do full-spectrum primary care, including medication-assisted therapy for substance-use disorders. I am appointed by the Governor as the Local Health Officer Representative to the Oregon Psilocybin Advisory Board. And so I was appointed at the beginning of the Board, 2021, January 2021. So I serve on that Board as a Health Officer Representative, and I serve the entire state Health Officer Caucus. So I have informed other health officers across the state around what we're doing and some of the questions, and I've actually received feedback from them that I've brought to the full Board. Today, I am here as your Clackamas County Health Officer. I am not speaking for the Psilocybin Advisory Board, I'm speaking as your Health Officer here. However, I do have a lot of knowledge around what's been happening on the Board, and I'm happy to share that with you. I'm also happy to share with you what my thoughts are around this as a local public health issue or not. And I'll just preface it with, I don't have major concerns around the public health aspects of it, but we can go into details of that. So first off, I do want to frame this a little bit from the medical standpoint. Psilocybin-assisted therapy has been studied in other countries, in our country, in a medical clinical model. There are some really quite good, high-quality Phase I and Phase II clinical trials that suggest benefit of psilocybin-assisted therapy in a clinical setting for anxiety, depression, potentially for substance-use disorders. That research was reviewed by the Oregon Psilocybin Advisory Board, and there was a summary that was published about a year ago, in July of 2021, of the evidence that's out there. That being said, those clinical trials were done in clinical settings with a sort of initial visit, a discussion with a therapist, the psilocybin administration session, where somebody goes through ingesting the psilocybin, and then an integration session afterwards to kind of process what's been happening. What Oregon has passed is not a medical clinical model. It does build on both the clinical trials and medical research around benefits, as well as, you know, millennial-old indigenous knowledge of wellness and benefits in many cultures of psychedelics as plant medicine to improve wellness. This is not, and it's not a medical clinical model in that the facilitator, who will provide the services, does not have to have a license of any medical sort. In the measure, the only requirement, or you cannot require more than a high school degree in order to become a facilitator. What the program has been doing is coming up with recommendations for training programs. So there will be an extensive training program for anybody who wants to become a facilitator to learn about psilocybin, learn how to administer it safely, learn potential benefits, potential harms, and it's really an extensive training program over, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting now, at least 80, 120-hour training program or more.
Practicum.
And practicum. So it's really a new form of licensed professional that Oregon has the opportunity to build from the grounds up. So that being said, the Board, there are many medical professionals on the Board, and we all are very concerned about patient and client safety, as well as facilitator safety, and ensure that, you know, the benefits are greater than the potential harms here. So the training program is extensive, there's a practicum before you can become a facilitator. We also think about, you know, Oregon being on the forefront of some new things. We also think about cannabis sometimes and how it's connected. I do want to clarify that psilocybin services are very different from cannabis legalization in that it is not a direct-to-consumer sale. So nobody will be able to go someplace and buy psilocybin and take it home or give it to other people. The production facility is a facility that will produce psilocybin under fairly strict rules that have been discussed by the Board, and Angie can talk more about that. It will be transported to the service center, which is a location in which a facilitator provides at least the psilocybin administration session. There is a requirement in there that you have a pre-session, which we've talked a lot about informed consent, we've talked a lot about what needs to go into that discussion around screening the individual for their safety. And then the integration session afterwards is optional, it could happen at the service center or elsewhere. But the actual administration is, a client comes to the service center itself, is administered the psilocybin product by the facilitator, and the entire experiential administration session happens there at the service center. We've talked a lot about when somebody should be allowed to leave. There's a lot that will go into the rules that are not yet published around those things, but there is a lot of discussion around what will be required to be licensed as a service center. So there's no direct-to-consumer sales. The sales are from the production to the service center, and then the dispensing by the facilitator in that session. I think that the Board has also thought around some of the experiences of cannabis around the time, place, and manner for these service centers, safety, locking the product, you know, video surveillance, number of people who need to be there for client and facilitator safety, et cetera. And I'm happy to speak to some of the things that the Board has discussed. Again, these will all go into the rules. The Board can make a recommendation, Angie and OHA will draft rules, the Rules Advisory Committee will come out with the details that we don't have yet, which puts us in the position that you.
Well, thank you for everything you've said. I have a lot of questions. And I'm writing, I'm thinking, wow, wow, you know, thank you for that overview and contribute other information. Feel free to do as you come along. So this question is kind of twofold. Number, my question is, is it FDA-approved? Now, I'm not saying the FDA is the most wonderful government entity out there, I am not saying that, but is it FDA-approved, the use of this?
It is not.
Okay.
No. It has been designated by the FDA as what is called a breakthrough therapy.
A breakthrough therapy by the FDA.
For the treatment of depression, which suggests that clinical evidence suggests it may be better and it's worth more research.
But what?
That it's worth more research.
Worth more research.
But it has not been approved at this point, although it is, personally, I wouldn't be surprised if that does happen in the next handful of years.
How is it processed? Is it processed at the same facilities?
So the manufacturers, and can I pass it, do you mind if I pass it over to Angie?
No, please introduce yourself.
Thank you.
And your role in all of this, this whole issue.
Sounds great. Thank you, Chair Smith and Commissioners. Thank you for asking us to be here today, and my name is Angie Albee. I am the Section Manager for the newly-created Oregon Psilocybin Services Section. It's important to note where we're housed. We're in the Center for Health Protection within the Public Health Division at OHA. And that's important because the Center for Health Protection is the regulatory space that really works on protection of health for those regulatory programs. I'm happy to provide a very brief overview and fill in some gaps that Dr. President did a great job explaining, if that's helpful, it might answer some of your questions, and then maybe we could both take some questions after that. Will that work?
Whatever. I have very specific questions that need to be answered. If you'd rather give your overview, go ahead.
Do you want me to go ahead and address your question first? Yeah.
Give your overview, yeah, whatever, whatever you feel like you want to do.
Thank you, Chair Smith, Commissioners. To your question about how is psilocybin processed, and if the processing is done, you know, at the same site, I'll give you a little bit of insight about what a manufacturer site is. First of all, it has, it requires a land-use compatibility statement to make sure that it's in compliance with local zoning, so that's a part of this that they'll have to provide before we can issue a license. It is, it's a defined premise, not a primary residence, so it's not something where people are going to be growing in their homes. There's no allowance for outdoor cultivation, this is only indoor cultivation under a very kind of strict regulatory framework that we will be discussing a little bit more in a couple of weeks when we come out with the draft rules. I will say that there are 200 species or more of psilocybin-producing mushrooms, and at the Board's recommendation, when we went through our expedited rule set this spring, we had adopted rules on products and testing at the Board's recommendation, and really limited this to one species, and that's Solaceby cubensis. There was a lot of research done on this particular species around safety, and so we are limiting to one species. And also, the manufacturer and processing of psilocybin products, there's some specifics that we've already adopted in our earlier rulemaking sessions, but it's important to note that the licensed manufacturer can only sell to a licensed service center. The licensed service center can only sell to a client during an administration session at the licensed service center. I wish I could draw this for you, because I know it's a little confusing.
Before you go further, so the manufacturing place is different than the administration place where you give it, okay? How do we make sure that the manufacturer is consistent with, how is it tested? See, this is what we're, if this Board is supposed to set time, place, and manner, we don't even know what we're setting time, place, and manner for. Now, I know of two facilities, this is very interesting, so can you continue?
Absolutely. Thanks, Chair Smith, Commissioners. So the facility will have a defined premises, and that's different than the licensed service center. And I want to kind of go in different directions, but I want to stick to your question about testing. All of the licensed testing labs have to be accredited first before we can issue them a license, and they have to be accredited by the Oregon Laboratory, Environmental Laboratory Accreditation Program. We refer to them as ORALAP for short. So that's a requirement prior to licensure. When we adopted those testing rules earlier this spring, we made sure that there were specific tests that were required, potency and speciation. Speciation testing makes sure that only the Solaceby cubensis is being manufactured. And the potency piece is important because it's really important to know how much psilocybin is in the product before the client consumes it. There were also, I'll just note, really, a lot of Board recommendations that are posted on our website, you can access those and look through those anytime, but there were recommendations that were made about But there were recommendations that were made about packaging, labeling of the product, and we will be addressing those in the next rulemaking.
Okay, those are still coming. I do have more questions.
May I jump in very quickly? I apologize, Chair Smith, but I do want to state that the one species of mushroom has been approved by the board and the rules. You can do extracts of that at the manufacturer, but there's no synthetic psilocybin that has been approved in this process right now. So it's that one species, either whole mushroom or an extract of that mushroom that has a set potency that is done at the manufacturer.
Thank you. Would you like to continue on your presentation, and then I can go back and ask questions?
Sounds great. I think it might help. So I'll frame, I'll be respectful of your time, but I'll frame this as briefly as I can. When you ask what are psilocybin services, Dr. President did a great job of describing this, and I'll go into a little bit more detail. This is, consists of three sessions. One is a preparation session, and that's where a client meets with a licensed facilitator who's gone through the OHA-approved training programs and have graduated and had a sign-off from a lead educator in that training program to be able to provide services to clients. They meet, they go through informed consent and client intake. Again, these rules, these draft rules, we're actually drafting from board recommendations now. And the reason why we're drafting them now is Measure 109 required that the board made recommendations to OHA by June 30th of this year. And so we waited for the board to finish making recommendations before we started drafting the subset of rules. So that preparation session with the client intake and informed consent will come out with details soon. The administration session happens only at the licensed service center. That's the only place that it can take place. It's the only time a client can purchase or consume psilocybin. They're not able to take it off-site with them. There will be requirements on, you know, dosage and duration so that a client who receives psilocybin services and consumes the product will have to stay at the licensed service center for a specific amount of time. We'll be looking at safety, so, you know, a lot of questions have come up. Will people be, you know, getting behind the wheel and driving home afterward? You know, while we don't have those draft rules ready, the Oregon Health Authority takes this seriously in protecting public health and safety. So that will be a part of what we address and rule, and some of those recommendations came from the board as well. The integration session is optional if the client wants to receive it. It's a great opportunity for folks to be referred to peer support networks or other services that they might need. We think that there are a lot of folks, end-of-life anxiety, veterans, people that are really struggling with certain issues that might want to access psilocybin services for trauma, anxiety, or depression, or addiction, or even just for wellness issues that might want to be referred to other support networks that exist in the community and around the state. So that's the integration session. Again, the client intake and informed consent we'll address later in rule. That's kind of what psilocybin services are. I'd like to just tell you briefly about what we license so that you know what the four license types are. The first is the manufacturer license. Of course, we've talked about that a little bit. The second is the licensed service center, and I think these are the two that you're most interested in at this point in time. The licensed service center cannot be within 1,000 feet of a school. It also requires a land-use compatibility statement before we can issue a license. As well as going out, we'll be going out and inspecting these premises to make sure that they're in compliance with statute and rule. Then, you know, another thing to note about a service center is that, you know, again, a defined premise, and it can't be like a primary residence. And there's a lot more in Measure 109 that discusses the service center. I just want to mention that there have been some board recommendations that have been really helpful to read and look through, and we're drafting rules from, that really talk about how many people can be in the administration session, in the licensed service center premises. What does this look like, you know, in operation? And what does that administration session room look like? How do we safely store the products at the licensed service center? And how do we address things like video surveillance and these other issues to really reinforce client and product safety? So I just want to mention that. There's also a product tracking system. We call it spore-to-sale because unlike cannabis, which is a plant and grows in very different environments, psilocybin doesn't use the space, the electricity, the water, or the other resources that cannabis does. But we're using a similar tracking system from spore-to-sale. So from the moment that it begins cultivation and that process until the sale to the client, and also disposal. We have to set production limits, and so that's really important to note for the manufacturers and service centers so we don't have an overabundance of psilocybin. We're working to prevent any kind of diversion and making sure that, you know, there's no sale to the unregulated space. I'll just briefly mention, we have two other license types, the testing labs that I mentioned that have to be accredited as well, and they'll be testing for potency, speciation. And if OHA decides, determines that we need to, we'll also look at pesticides, heavy metals, or microbial, and other issues. We'll have, you know, specific batches, so if there's a concern with a specific product, we'll be able to trace that to that product. The last license I'll just talk about is the licensed facilitator. This is someone that has to go through the extensive training program that Dr. President described. Those training programs, all of the curriculum has to meet our, what's in our rule. We adopted those rules earlier this spring, and we've already started approving those training programs so they can get started. We just learned that they may be subject to Higher Education Coordinating Commission licensure, so there would be an extra support for students that are, you know, wanting to go into those training programs. And so those licensed facilitators are the ones that are present with clients at the licensed service center during the administration session process. I'm going to stop there. I don't know if you have more questions or if that's helped.
I do. And Commissioner Savas has his light on too, and I'm sure other Commissioners have very specific questions from our point of view and what we are asked to do. I appreciate everything you have. I'm sure you have a headful of knowledge that you can help us with. How is this drug administered?
So it's administered primarily orally, so ingesting either the whole mushroom or an extract that may be, that may be put in a beverage. We have made rules around not combining it with other potentially mind-altering substances, so it cannot be an extract put in with alcohol or even other foods that have potentially psychoactive substances in them. So there could be a liquid extract or the whole mushroom that is eaten. There was some discussion around, you know, nasal inhalant aspects for people who are unable to swallow. I believe that that is not, has not gone through, and it's really an oral ingestion.
So you say I can eat a whole mushroom. What size are these mushrooms? I've seen mushrooms, they come in all different sizes. I mean, how do you, how do you limit the growing of a mushroom? And are you able to test each specific? Look, I'm a farmer, okay? This is very important because, you know, you have an apple tree. You pick an apple off the tree, different size, color, shape, taste different than the apple on the limb next to it. How is that monitored?
Yeah, I'm going to pass that one to you.
Absolutely. So this is a great question. We have the testing labs that will always be testing the batches for potency. With dried whole mushrooms, there's a general, you know, a general dosage. I will just say that many of the clinical trials, although they might have used a different oral, maybe they had a pill or a synthetic substance that they administered. Whole mushrooms are known to have a general dosage amount based on how much people consume. I think that while people may want to eat dried whole mushrooms, I'm not sure what that tastes like, but I think that I've heard that there might be better options available that might make it a little more tenable for folks, especially if they're dealing with end-of-life anxiety and they need to consume the product in a way that doesn't upset their stomach or taste bad. And so we did adopt rules around products and the product options, and they are all going to be tested for potency. So that way, we know how much psilocybin is in those batches, and they will be packaged and labeled so that when the client consumes that product, they know how much that is being administered, and there will be a maximum to that.
You say that mushrooms treat anxiety, depression, and addiction disorders. But then you also said overall wellness issues. The problem with this, a doctor is not able to diagnose a person. This is not a doctor who administers this. But you said overall wellness issues. Hmm, I don't have any of these issues, but I come into a clinic, you know, I just don't have the energy like I did last week. Or I have this, that is not outlined in what you specifically state. I have trouble with the person who administering this, administers this mushroom, which to me, it sounds if you do whole mushrooms, the measurement is not exacting like it would be in a prescription drug that's manufactured. I'm not saying manufactured drugs are the best, but there is a control issue here. A doctor not administering and/or diagnosing what they are giving this for. You don't have a problem with that?
This has been discussed a lot in the training, in the training programs, ensuring that facilitators have adequate training to identify potential harms and potential risks. So, you know, there are certain medical conditions that maybe, may have risks such as some heart disease. The medical risks, the, we have been very careful to ensure that the facilitator is not diagnosing, they are not working outside of their scope, but they have the tools to help identify somebody that they may want to refer to their medical provider or to a licensed therapist for further evaluation and further discussion before they safely have an administration session with them. So a lot of the informed consent, a lot of the client safety kind of checklists before in that preparatory session, we really want to ensure that any training program gives any facilitator the tools they need to identify people that they should not be administering to and that they should refer.
And will they have a list? Will they have a list of what they're trying to treat?
So we can say that studies have shown there has been benefit for this, but as it is not FDA-approved, as not clinically approved to treat these things, we just know that there is some building evidence that it has been helpful in certain diagnoses. These are not sessions where people are treating a certain diagnosis or even making that diagnosis. This is up for individuals to say, I have interest in psilocybin services for these reasons. They can talk to their facilitator about this in the preparatory session. If the facilitator has concerns about the medical safety, they need to be able to spot that and refer them elsewhere. And they need to ensure that they're not working outside of their scope, which would be diagnosing and treating.
And the scope is yet to be defined?
Well, the scope actively excludes any diagnosis or treatment. These are not licensed therapists. This is a very specific process of psilocybin administration and integration. And then in that integration session, that's where referrals can be made. It may be a licensed therapist who becomes a facilitator, and they just need to be sure that they are not working, not mixing the scopes, right? During the facilitation session or the administration session, they are non-directive in their approach, and that's written into the, into the rules, where they are not doing therapy while somebody is under the influence. In the integration session, it's focused on integrating the experience. If they want to continue to work with that therapist on some of the things that came up, they can do that in their therapy sessions. And it may, the facilitator may be that same person who works with them later within their scope of mental health therapy, working in other modalities of therapy later. But it's written in that the facilitation session, the administration and the integration sessions are within a scope that does not diagnose or treat any mental health conditions.
Okay, I have two more questions, Commissioners. Thank you for being patient. Is this addictive?
I have not seen any evidence of this being addictive.
Okay. What is the cost?
The, I think there are a lot of questions around cost that I don't believe are determined at this point, but I'm going to refer that one to Angie.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, it's important to note that OHA cannot regulate the cost of products or services, and we are a fee-based program, so the cost of the license fees have to cover the cost of our section's work, the regulatory work. So related to cost and services, there have been a lot of numbers out there that, you know, people have used. There are psilocybin services happening around the world where, places where psilocybin is not illegal. And so this has been going on for a number of years, and there are many people that have been involved in the practice of psilocybin services that are involved in various universities. And so I think that while we don't have an actual number, we don't think this is going to be incredibly cheap. It's not where you're going to pay $20 to go in and have this. You know, I do think that if people are committed to, you know, working on an issue through psilocybin services, you know, they're going to go through the process, they're going to find a licensed facilitator that meets, you know, that's a good fit together. And, you know, I would, I would think that most people who are really trying to access this for wellness and for health reasons probably would not work in the unregulated space and purchase psilocybin or forage for it outside, but instead, you know, be really truly working on psilocybin services for health. You know, there is, psilocybin grows naturally around Oregon and the Pacific Northwest and around the world. And so, you know, it's just important to note that if someone wants to access these services, you know, it's a safe option for people to have someone to be with them and to make sure that they're safe, that if there's a problem, we can address that problem. And also in a surrounding that also helps create a trauma-informed environment so people, you know, can relax and can enjoy their experience.
Thank you. I'm going to interject here on the time. Is there, are there known side effects, adverse side effects?
So there are potential side effects during the session, nausea, potentially vomiting, headache. It can increase heart rate, potentially a transient increase in blood pressure, which is something that a facilitator needs to be able to identify if there's a heart or blood pressure condition of concern. The one kind of, probably the major physical health potential side effect is a QT interval prolongation. It's a, it's a, it's a heart, a heart rhythm potential effect. We have many medications that are FDA-approved that have this effect, and so that's something that a facilitator just needs to be able to identify if somebody has a known heart disease. And then the other mental health effects, it can bring up grief, anxiety, transient paranoia. At the same time, that can also be treating some of these as well. So everybody responds to alternate states of consciousness in different ways, and there are potential side effects there. But long-term side effects, other than that potential heart disease, I haven't, I haven't seen anything of concern.
Okay. You know, thank you very much for that. I may have other questions, but Commissioner Savas, you're up, followed by Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah. Thank you. So, Dr. President, when you were speaking originally at the beginning, I was listening to the integration process, and I assumed that the integration process was really the monitoring after the administration or the consumption of this, but that's not the case, I'm hearing.
So the administration session is from ingestion through to the point that they are safe to leave. They're no longer in an alternate state of consciousness. And that is all non-directive. The facilitator is there to support the process, intervene for safety as needed, but primarily sort of hold space for the, for the individual. After the session, then you come back and you have an integration session where you discuss things that may have come up during the administration session and, you know, process them as well as potentially refer on to other therapies that may be desired at that point.
Right. And you mentioned that the integration is optional.
It is.
Determined by the, by the patient themselves, correct?
By the client themselves.
Not by the doctor or the facilitator.
That's correct.
Not the doctor. So that, that, that's interesting. So the duration, what'd you call it? The, that state, that altered state? How long is that roughly?
Well, that's very dose-dependent, and as the dosages haven't been fully set in rule, or the duration has not been fully set in rule yet, but I think on average, four to six, maybe eight hours.
Okay. So is that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Paul.
Four to six, eight hours.
Okay, thank you.
So in that four to six, eight hours, is that person, is it mandatory that person stays at the facility?
As much as able, yes. So we cannot require people to physically restrain individuals, but we have, that needs to be discussed in the preparatory session of if, so you, so there are recommendations that in the preparatory session, there's a discussion of not leaving until the session is finished. If you do leave, they may need to call emergency services if there is any concern of your safety. There's a lot of discussion around what, what safety is and there, and everything in that facilitator's power to keep them there beyond physically restraining them.
Okay, so essentially, as I understand it from experiences, that people, you can't restrain them unless that people you can't restrain them unless you are you can you can establish, usually a doctor established, for their safety, life, safety, welfare. I declare this person has to be restrained or retained.
Right, right.
And it sounds like we're not going to have that facilitator is not going to have that 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 license or whatever, the expertise or the powers by virtue of education or their certification or licensure to say that that person needs to be restrained, like a doctor would in an emergency room, correct?
So, correct, they're not a physician. They can't make that that determination of their mental capacity. However, there's a lot that's going into the preparatory session around safety planning. And if something were to go wrong, who are the people we can call? How are how do we calm you down? And and really doing everything within legal powers to ensure that people do not leave before the session is over.
All right. The other question I had, so you mentioned, and I almost kind of hit some of my my notes I took here. Will someone actually be hooked up for their vitals to maintain and look at their their heart rate and their blood pressure?
No.
So, they won't be hooked up? So, it'll be more of visual monitoring than it will be anything else?
Yes.
Okay. Duration, integration versus networking, vitals. So, four to six to eight hours. So, my my concern is this, and even more concerned now. I appreciate your answers. I don't question that, that someone could say, have one experience or the first experience of the second, say, you know, if I get up and leave and you can't stop me and off I go. And that's a concern, I guess, to the public. That's a concern I would have as well as, and I just I just learned this through life and helping people and friends and family that have gone and I've gone with them to for their treatments and whatnot. And I've I've learned I just got a lot of respect for psychiatrists, psychologists, how things are prescribed. And we've got a lot of lot of drugs out there that by prescription only, you know, sometimes it takes a year or two years actually to get someone balanced on on existing stuff that is FDA-approved currently. And it just seems that this is really the cart before the horse. You know, can't a patient can't buy these products over the counter and consume them and somebody basically self-suscribe. They have to have it has to be distributed and licensed or dispensed by, you know, again, prescribed by a doctor, a psychiatrist, and then and then psychologists can't even do that. It has to be a psychiatrist with a certain qualification. And then dispensed by a pharmacist, you know, in a regulatory environment. This is interesting because it's the other way around. A person can actually say, I'm interested in it. I want to try that. And it sounds like and can basically subscribe to it. And I have a concern, I just have a concern about that, knowing that as we have seen situations, because this is a psychoactive drug, if you will, I just have concerns about people going out on the street, you know, leaving the facility. There might be a trigger out there. Could be, you know, people that have some some issues. They had a trauma, might hear a car backfire or might see a picture of something that might trigger a reaction even without that psychotic, but could trigger. So, they could be amplified in a sense that that would be a risk to the to themselves and the public at large. That's the concern I have.
Yeah.
I'll stop there. I might have another question, but I'll just stop there.
Thank you, Paul. That's very interesting. All commissioners want to speak on this. Thank you for being patient with us. This is a huge education process, not only for us, but the people out there listening.
Chair, chair, it sounds like maybe Dr. President might want to respond to that.
I would like to just briefly. One of the one of the criteria that a facilitator needs to go through in the preparatory session is other mental health medications. If there's been a change to them recently, if there's been a recent mental health hospitalization. If somebody is not stable from a mental health standpoint, they could be declined services based on that facilitator's expertise. I also do want to say that that psilocybin is is consumed illegally at this point. And I think that there's the the goal of this is to make it a safer space than it currently is. But I also really acknowledge all of your concerns and and agree that those have come up in my mind many times.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. This is very informative. I really appreciate you being here. My initial concern with this was that the facilitators were not mental health professionals. But I've had I've learned a lot about what the criteria is, what is what is taught. And so, Dr. President, I think, you know, we have this like long-term relationship since I've been the commissioner of you advising this commission. And I guess and you're you're in the room where this is all happening. Are you confident that the discussions that are happening will assure safety in not completely, but to the to a, you know, a balancing effect? Assure safety, that the training will be adequate? That this process without there being? I know that some licensed professionals will become facilitators, but I'm just interested in in your view and opinion on that.
My personal view is I be I applied to have this position on the board because I had many of these same concerns. And I feel that the board recommendations have met my concerns, and I feel that it is it is safe, yes.
Okay, so that was my my first question. I'm interested, I understand that there's 120 hours of training, and then there is a practicum. What does the practicum consist of?
Yeah, can I pass that one to you?
Absolutely. The practicum is an opportunity for a licensed facilitator to work with their instructor team, a part of the training program, to better understand how to actively, you know, facilitate a psilocybin services session. Right now, that could happen in many ways. It could be, you know, starting off. There's there's the difficulty of we don't have licensed service centers yet. So, how do students, you know, gain practicum skills? And so, there's a lot of partnership and a lot of work being done with with spaces that do ketamine clinics so that there can be observation during those those sessions as well as other practicums that take place in other countries where psilocybin services take place, understanding that Measure 109 and the rules that we will adopt from the Oregon Health Authority will have very specific requirements attached to them that those places might not. But to give an opportunity to observe someone in an altered state and to be able to learn how to support them without being directive. So, you know, how do you how do you effectively help someone safely go to the restroom? Or if they need, you know, earplugs or and I, you know, something over their eyes or they want the room to be darker, you know, helping them and being there with them.
And that also gives the opportunity for an instructor to observe a student and bring up any concerns that they may have over their behavior with clients. So, similar to, you know, a clinical type practicum, although this is a separate licensure than a medical. It's a an experiential piece where the student can learn and the instructor can look for red flags or otherwise give feedback to the students.
Has there been any recommendation or consensus forming about how long that practicum period will be for a licensed facilitator?
I believe we discussed it, and I don't know what the answer is in my brain right now.
So, it's in process?
Yeah.
And actually, all of the rules for training program, curriculum, products and testing have already been adopted. We reached out to partners last year to really understand what do we need to expedite for rulemaking as we were building our timeline. And unfortunately, our local government partners were very busy with other things during that time, but it was identified that those were the three categories that we really needed to focus on. So, we have already adopted those rules May 20th, and they're posted on our website. I'm happy to share those with you if you need help accessing them or accessing the website.
Okay, but the practicum piece is yet to be fleshed out.
It's in there.
That's adopted in the training program.
I just don't have it in my brain.
Oh, you don't have it in your head?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, well, that's good to know that that's all been thought through. I'm this is probably a question for Nate, but I'm going to go ahead and throw it out there. I'm wondering if we, as a local government, can approve service centers but not approve manufacturing? If we can split those up?
Nate, can you answer that? Maybe Nate, would you like to take a seat at the side next to Stephen Magcor? Thank you.
Oh, I defer to you.
Yeah, no, you're fine. We have more questions, don't worry.
No, that's fine. So, the way that Measure 109 reads, as I understand it, is that you do have the option of opting out of one or both of the license types. And so, there's two, as Angie described. There's there's multiple license issue, but the two premises license, right, for either manufacturing or service centers are eligible to be opted out of.
Okay, and if we opted out of one now, could we opt back in later?
Yes, yes. And so, it the mechanism might be different depending on the flavor of the opt-out, I guess you can say. But yes, we could get you there.
Okay, I'm looking for any other questions that I might have.
Well, we can come back, commissioners. If you don't have all your questions, we'll come back.
No, just the last one I had regarding the practicum. You mentioned that how there may you've just learned that there may be a higher education component. Could you elaborate on that?
Absolutely. We learned after we had adopted our training close to adopting our training program rules that these training programs meet the criteria or may meet the criteria for the higher education, coordinating commissions, licensure process for career training schools. And so, we've been partnering with the HECC, as we refer to them, you know, to really understand how to get these training programs licensed in time for them to start admitting students. So, that would be a consumer protection piece licensing. Since we don't have the authority at OHA to license and regulate training programs, we only approve their curriculum. This would be that licensure process and the regulation of those training programs and schools.
Okay, thank you. So, this has been very helpful. I came in today thinking that I was very concerned about the qualifications of someone that could become a licensed facilitator. I don't have that concern anymore. I think that we have a mental health crisis. We need to provide we need to create a society, and we're providing services that need to be accessible. But my concern, I don't know if during the conversation we can address this further. And it's it's a bias really because we went through marijuana, and we really saw the marijuana. There's the the legal marijuana grows, and then there's the illegal. And there's so much crime that was a part of that. I'm a little bit biased against the manufacturer. But I'll leave that for our discussion for our commission, and we can hopefully flesh out what some of those risks might be.
Yeah, we have two other commissioners who would like to speak. I've also just been notified that on Zoom from OHSU is Dr. Cortheus. And he or she has not had an opportunity to weigh in on this. Commissioners, would you like to to go ahead and continue your questioning? And then we'll have the doctor on Zoom comment?
Sure, yes, that would be great.
Okay, we have Commissioner Schrader up, and then Commissioner Shaw. Go ahead, Commissioner Schrader.
I think, oh, Commissioner Shaw, okay.
No, you're up.
Oh, me.
Okay.
You touched a little bit, Commissioner Fisher touched a little bit. One of the questions I have, and that is prior training, you know, in order to get to medical school, in order to get advanced degrees. There are prerequisites in higher ed that you have to go through as well as requisite testing like the MCAT into medical school. You know, other domains, you know, you have to take a bar exam to be a lawyer after majoring undergraduate and then applying. So, there is nothing in place. So, anyone can go into a training now with any without any kind of set prerequisites. And is that why HECC is involved? Is that where this is heading? In other words, is there required? Does somebody have to be have a BA degree in English? Would that count? Do you have to have a BS in biochem? I mean, can anyone just kind of walk off the street, get the training of 120 hours with no other prerequisite?
Yeah, so this is a great question. I'm happy to provide as much of an answer as I can. First of all, the prerequisite, there is no prerequisite for, you know, the other than a high school or diploma or equivalency. So, I'll start there. That said, training programs, you know, go through an admissions process. So, I think that it's really important that, you know, you all understand part of our rulemaking is that a lead educator, as part of that training program, takes responsibility for signing off, that this individual has completed all of the requirements of the training program, but also is capable of providing psilocybin services. And so, that's a really important piece as part of our process that we built in to to help with safety. The other thing is that a student would have to also take two examinations. One is a comprehensive examination after they finish their requirements in a training program to make sure that, you know, they truly understand the materials. The curriculum is is quite broad. If you take a look, there's there's a lot of components of that curriculum that they have to learn. So, this exam is comprehensive and makes sure that they understand that material. The next exam would be an exam that OHA provides, and this is something that is required in statute. And this would be to make sure that they understand the regulatory requirements about, you know, around being a facilitator and understanding the statute and the rules, which we think is important.
But you could have a GED even and take this training. You don't have to have any other advanced or undergraduate or graduate work in order to move into this domain. Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
And I just want to be clear that the scope of practice is that this is not therapy or or diagnosis. So, being able to to work within that scope of facilitation. There are some other programs around the world and around and in this country that are not necessarily in the legal space that have actually been looked to for a little bit of this as well. Something like called the Zendo program, where, you know, people at, say, music festivals, there's an area where somebody who's having a difficult time with a psychedelic experience has people who are trained to sit with them and help calm them and that sort of thing. So, there's a lot from and and those the there are some other kind of examples of basic training and basic needs for this particular altered state of consciousness type setting that it just makes for a it makes for a different. You know, I say it's a different licensure, but it's a different kind of act of practice than than therapy or medical treatment.
So, it is a personal choice for someone to move into an altered state of consciousness. We know that in their other marijuana, alcohol, all those other kinds of things. And I guess in a sense, maybe not can alter your consciousness. What what part of the brain is this component affecting? Is it is it?
So, there's some biochemistry.
Is it the is it the hippocampus? Is it like?
I think that Dr. Corthis, who's on Zoom, would be able to to explain that more than than my brain can right at the moment.
Because my my concern is it's it's almost if there's just because in an altered state of consciousness, like dreaming, you can have a bad dream or a good dream. And is really the safety issue if someone goes off and has horrifying vision of some kind or something that is so upsetting that, again, it has? Does that happen with this substance? I mean, is that why they really need somebody there to make sure they're okay?
It certainly can have that effect with the substance. You know, people you hear about bad trips, right? People can can be triggered, and and that's why having a facilitator there to ensure safety and non-directive kind of approach to calming people, talking about potential triggers before going into the session and having that safety plan of what to do that's agreed upon by both. We've had discussions around, you know, informed consent around touch. You know, is touch going to be a good thing if you're not doing well? Is touch going to be a bad thing? And what sorts of touch do you give consent to prior to the administration session? So, that's part of the facilitator training is how to how to gently redirect people to a positive experience or to manage any negativity.
Okay, because that would be a concern because.
Absolutely.
I guess the other piece that I wanted I'm just it's it's whole thing is fascinating. It's not FDA-approved, it's not medically approved, not licensed therapists. It can be mind-altering, and it can either be a good trip or a bad trip. Okay, and the real concern is if someone may have a bad trip. It reminds me of back in the day of LSD. Are there are there? Once someone takes this, are there is there a possibility of flashbacks outside of the venue? Is it that kind of a psychotropic drug? Because do we know? And I mean.
You know, I think with any any psychedelic, there are potential for psychosis-type triggers that have been discussed that would absolutely be a reason to refer to a licensed medical provider to address and treat[1759.68] to address and treat and ensure. What the facilitators need to do is ensure that they know how to protect their personal safety and the safety of the client, and have plans for if things go badly. I think, given the experience in clinical trials that have been done, that is actually very, very rare, that example.
Okay.
May I make a note about dosage? This might be important as well. There's a standard dosage that clinical trials have relied on for, you know, for psilocybin studies. And the board has had a lot of conversation about, especially from mycologists that are part of the board, and, and, you know, other medical professionals coming together and talking about this. There were recommendations made that a client doesn't have to start with what, you know, we haven't set those dosage amounts in rule yet, but that they don't have to start with a standard dosage or a higher dosage, that the board recommendations were that the client and the facilitator could determine if maybe there was a lower dosage that, of psilocybin that they would start with if they were concerned. So, I do want to mention that, just as a part of this. I think Dr. Present talked a little bit about dosage and duration. And, you know, it's just important to note that it'll really be a client and facilitator, you know, sort of decision on if they want to start with a lower dose because of potential concerns.
That concerns me, though, too, because dosage is usually something that is determined by trial and error. And this is someone not necessarily trained with any requirements prior to that, to even know what a dosage might be. I mean, I, I, this is, I don't know, it's, I will just tell you, that is somewhat worrisome to me. Having folks who may have gone through a program, but dosage issues have to go through clinical trials over and over and over again. I mean, my parents were nurses, and when they started to use things like penicillin and antibiotics, dosages were something that had to really be strictly regulated, so they couldn't do. So, I, I just find, I just find it troubling. But, but thank you for answering my questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Shaw. And then we'll go to the doctor who is on Zoom after your comments. Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, good morning, Dr. Present and Angie. Clarkamas County has got a serious problem with addictions, opioids, alcoholism, and other addictive personality-type issues. Dr. Present, if psilocybin is administered in Clarkamas County, do you believe that the, that the overall benefit from psilocybin will help ease addictions of opioids and other addictions that you're facing every day in the clinics in Clarkamas County?
I, it is definitely my personal opinion, and it will not worsen it. And I do think there is, there is high potential that it can improve our mental health concerns.
Is there, is there any medical evidence that psilocybin will assist in alleviating the kind of addictions that you see in your clinic every day?
There is a growing body of evidence that it is supportive in treating alcohol and tobacco addiction in particular. I do not know of clinical trials that have looked directly at opioid addiction, but addiction in general has, has, you know, similar chemistry. Again, Dr. Korthas on the phone is an addiction medicine specialist, and he may, he may be able to talk more directly to that. He also chaired the research subcommittee that looked at the evidence review and may be able to speak to more specifics. However, I, there is a growing body of evidence that suggests that it has high potential to be beneficial. And that has been recognized by the FDA as well as the, in calling it a breakthrough medication.
Okay. Is, are you worried about individuals who have ingested opioid or synthetic opioid, like fentanyl, or some other drug, who goes into a service center and is administered psilocybin? What kind of complications could ensue from that? Do you, are you aware of any?
So, you know, the, there are a number of unknowns of an alternate state of consciousness, but I do not think that physiologically, there would be an overly sedating component to the respiratory system, from my understanding. Again, people should not be actively under the influence of anything when they come in for that integration session, and that needs to be discussed in the preparatory session. If it were to happen, the danger is in the opioid itself and not as much in the co-administration, but I, and my basic understanding of it, and what we know from clinical trials so far.
Okay, thank you. My last question is for Angie. Last night, I sat in on your Zoom with the Organ Health Authority. It was very interesting. It was more about questions to the OHA and not so much about answers. I was, I thought it was very interesting that some of the people who spoke last night talked about the current use of psilocybin. One was an indigenous American. Another one was a Jewish rabbi, who said he had been used for centuries in their religious practices. My question here is this. Constituents don't want to see another administrative burden on the state that is costly to the taxpayer. We have evidence that psilocybin is in use. In fact, I understand that one can get spores, and then in a very clean environment, in about five or six weeks, you can have psilocybin mushrooms that are ready for harvest. This doesn't take long. Does the state anticipate that the administration of psilocybin is going to pay for itself and not become a burden on the state treasury?
Yeah, thank you for that question. First and foremost, it's our requirement to be sustainable off of licensure fees for all of our regulatory work. So, while the legislature did provide some startup funds for us to, you know, get going before we start licensure, so that we can pull together our rules and our teams, all of our processes, and develop our systems, we will, we will completely move to other funds licensure fees. And it's very important that this isn't a burden on taxpayers, but instead is something that, you know, we follow the statutory language of Measure 109. That's our container. And that we also make sure that we apply rules that really support public health and safety. But to your question about administrative burden, you know, I think there's a lot of small businesses that are concerned, actually, about the cost of getting into this work. And we do hear that a lot, about, you know, how are you going to work to make licensure fees affordable? We're looking at all of those, all of those suggestions that we're receiving from the public and from partners and advisory board members. But it is a concern, and so, we are working to try to help support those small businesses, so they can be successful by bringing them information and resources, so that they can access technical support and other services that our agency doesn't, you know, isn't able to offer. All of that said, you know, that's another piece that's important, is making sure that the small businesses are successful as they set up. And so, we're trying to work closely with lots of different state agencies that work with businesses and really help provide a forum where people can go to and, and, you know, be able to tap into that resource and information. The last thing I'll say is, all of the questions that we receive, we pull together answers for in an FAQ that we send out to our distribution list and also post on our website. We did that for our December listening sessions. And anytime we make decisions, we try to write a letter to, you know, the folks that made those recommendations to us and explain why we made certain decisions. And so, that'll be a part of just answering general questions for folks after these listening sessions are over at the end of the week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our guest who is online. Dr. Korthias, are you able to hear us?
Yes, I've been listening with great interest. Thank you.
Would you like to comment on anything that you've heard today or any of the questions that have been asked?
I would just say that I've enjoyed hearing the many sophisticated questions from all of the commissioners, and enjoyed hearing the insightful responses from Dr. Present and the program coordinator, Albi. I, I won't make a separate statement, because I don't think I can approve on that. I will attempt to answer some of the questions that came up. First of all, from Commissioner Schrader, who asked about the neuroscience of psilocybin in the brain. The, it's absolutely fascinating. The working theory that's supported by functional MRI studies is that psilocybin has its effect by temporarily interrupting the thought connections between the frontal cortex and the medial temporal lobe of the brain. And what this does, this space is something called, another way of thinking about it is called the default network mode. And what you can, what, what happens is, when somebody goes into that altered state of consciousness, the working theory is that this presses the reset button on habitual habits of thinking, which we're all addicted to, right? And in the case of somebody who's coming in with habitual habits leading to depression or thoughts leading to anxiety, or focusing on life-threatening issues or their impending death, this gives an opportunity for, for people to reframe how they think about these big issues in their lives, and perhaps be more responsive in the setting of therapy and counseling. And, and that's, that's why I got interested initially and volunteered for the board, was its potential around treatment of addiction that Commissioner Shaw raises. There have been a number of trials, and I should say, I'm head of addiction medicine at OHSU and do a lot of research around addiction in Oregon. The, the studies that have been done around addiction, there have been a couple of studies looking at its use in alcohol use disorder, and in the context of cognitive behavioral therapy and other counseling. Pharmaceutical psilocybin administration decreased heavy drinking days and increased abstinence by a considerable amount in the people who received it. Those are both small trials. There's a larger trial that is just completing, and we should have the results on soon out of New York. The other substance that it's been shown to be effective, again, in preliminary small trials, is for tobacco cessation, where combined with cognitive behavioral therapy, again, in carefully controlled settings, using the pharmaceutical psilocybin product that's not yet FDA-approved, it dramatically increased smoking cessation. And that, that smoking cessation lasted in follow-up studies out beyond six months to a year, which is kind of unheard of in tobacco use disorder treatment. Those are the only studies that have been published in the addiction space. There are other studies that are ongoing, directed at opioid use disorder, at cocaine use disorder, and here in Oregon, at methamphetamine use disorder. But the, the results aren't anywhere close to being able to share right now. So, the bottom line is, in terms of addiction, I don't worry about psilocybin, actually. As an addiction medicine provider, I spend a lot of time worrying about the effects of fentanyl on our kids and the general population. I spend a lot of time worrying about vaping. I spend a lot of time worrying about methamphetamine. And psilocybin is at the very, very bottom of that list, and I think will, will ultimately be able to use it as a treatment.
Thank you. I am going to now move on to a public hearing that's required that we do that. Would you please to take a seat and stay in case there's any further questions from anybody? I will now open the meeting for public testimony and take the in-person testimony first. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to come up and talk about this issue? Seeing none. Tony, is there anybody on Zoom?
Chair, there's some, there's a hand up.
Oh, dude, you fill out a card. Please come forward. I was waiting for a blue card. I did not see one. Come forward, state your name, address, and your location of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Paris Cherco. I am a resident of Malino, Oregon, in Clarkamas County. This is actually the, the first time that I've heard of this whole issue, and it's been very educational. I am a military veteran. I'm a mother of five, and I run a farm, a big ranch. And as I'm listening to this, I recall when I was in the military, I said, "The only drug that I would ever do is shrooms. If I ever had a chance to do anything, it'd be shrooms." And so, my, as I'm listening, there's a list of reasons for patients to go in and receive this treatment. I don't believe that I qualify under any of those reasons, but I don't see anything stopping me from just, a regular person, from going in and having a good trip, paying for a good trip. My second concern is, once I'm in that altered state and I'm in that room with that person, where is the protection from anything happening to me in that room as far as that facilitator molesting me, raping me, doing anything inappropriate of that kind? I didn't hear any, anything that addressed that security for that person in that room.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Anybody else in the room who would like to testify on this? I do not see any hands. Tony, who do we have online on Zoom?
If there is anyone who would like to provide public comment on this hearing, please use the raise hand feature at this time. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing portion of this. Commissioner Fisher, you have your light on.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. I'm just interested in the question about the safety and potential abuse, and I'm wondering if we can, if that's been thought about or talked about, and if there's any safeguards in place.
Yeah, please come forward, answer that question briefly, please.
Actually, to address both of the questions raised that are very good.
This is Dr. Present. I think that the, the concern of facilitator abuse in the psychedelic world is of high prominent concern, and has been discussed many, many times. That has gone into recommendations the board has made around licensure of the service centers as far as numbers of people who need to be involved, as well as, there have been a lot of discussions around when to revoke a license and how to report concerns, and how to, you know, be very, very, very careful about looking into any potential concerns that people have around facilitators. And that is the benefit of licensure, really. There is a lot of concern in the psychedelic world that, that is unlicensed currently around abuse. And one of the benefits of licensing it is that you can revoke a license for people who are abusing that, that situation. So, we, we, in our discussions, we do believe that having a legal licensed mode for this increases patient safety in that realm. As for the, a client going in for a good trip, yes, that is part of the, the aspect of it being open to anybody for whatever they are looking for, for improving their wellness. Again, the mean, the, the reasons for wanting to access psilocybin services need to be discussed in that preparatory, preparatory session with the facilitator. And if somebody is saying, "I just want to come in and get high," they need to have a discussion around what that really means and what benefits they're actually looking for, and what the goals of therapy, or, excuse me, not of therapy, the goals of the session are. And, and that needs to go into the facilitator training program around how to, to address inappropriate goals.
And just a follow-up on the abuse piece. Is there anything that's done to prevent, not just report, but prevent in the first place? Is there video surveillance? Is there any recording of the session? Is there any observation? Is there any?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, first of all, background checks will be required for all facilitator licenses, and also for our service center, you know, all of our licensees. I think that's really important. We're, although our rules are being drafted right now, and we don't have those final rules out yet, we will have those made public, you know, in a few, probably the early week of September. There have been a lot of discussions about the concerns in the unregulated space around safety, around abuse. And so, we are looking at all the ways that we can help support client safety, including facilitator-client ratio, and making sure that we understand who's limited to be in the licensed premises while an administration session is taking place. Excuse me. And the other piece is, I think-
And the other piece is, I think it's really important to note that there are, you know, definite commitments from the Oregon Health Authority to find ways to ensure that, you know, we have a mechanism of reporting that is, is strong, is clear, and is well-known. And so we're looking at kind of, similar to mandatory reporting, what options we have to make sure that that's a requirement for licensure of psilocybin facilitators.
Okay, so the only thing I heard is the background check for prevention, is there any recording, any videotape, any observation that is being recommended, or any thought about that?
There's been a lot of discussion around video recording outside of the clinical setting, and the balances of safety versus patient, or client, excuse me, client privacy. I think there's still discussion to be had in the final rules around the service center around that. There is a balance between privacy and safety that is challenging, to say the least.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, the material I read in advance of the policy session, I was, I noted that it talked about the 120 hours as being certification, not a licensure. So today, it seems like it's the other way around. So is there, my, did I read something, the material, did it suggest, or did it change recently to where the 120 hours is now, you know, is qualifies as a license versus a certification?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So completing the training program is a requirement prior to licensure. So a facilitator would never be able to be licensed to provide psilocybin services without completing that training program. The 100, the curriculum hours and the practicum hours are all part of that training program requirement, and also would be followed with a comprehensive exam, and then the OHA exam as well, as a background check, before we could issue a license.
Would you define the experience of a patient in the, in the, what would you call it again, the service center, as a clinical or non-clinical setting?
Non-clinical.
Non-clinical?
Yeah.
Okay. I share Commissioner Schrader's concerns, frankly, and I guess after a number of years and a number of experience with people that suffer from a number of things, I have, you know, I can see frankly, that they're, you know, prescribed carefully in the right dosages that, you know, by the right person and the right setting, that this could be a benefit. I, I don't doubt that. I just doubt, my concern is, is the misuse of it, and perhaps, and really, my concerns earlier about if someone can, just simply for the experience, you know, there's a lot of people out there experimenting, they can walk into one of these facilities and then say, I'm gonna leave, and try something else, or have an experience that would put themselves or the public at risk. And right now, that concerns me, to have that somewhat sponsored by the state or the government, that it could be a risk frankly, to the local community. I think under some of the settings that I've heard, about whether religious, or some of the indigenous practices, that's kind of like an intervention kind of a setting, not necessarily, but it's in a setting, a safe, a safe place, where people feel safe, and this is more with someone who's got 120 hours and, and a certificate or a license. And I think that is a little bit odd, not odd, but different, unique. I don't think it's really the safe setting that someone might desire.
May I make a clarification?
Yes, and we need to move on. I understand that you're an advocate of this, but please, please be very brief.
Yes. This is not a measure that the state has supported, sponsored, or endorsed. We implement the measure, we weren't involved in creating the language or the campaign. I'm a public servant, and I work on behalf of a state agency to ensure public health and safety through the regulatory process. So I just want to make sure that I made that clear, just for the record.
I'm sorry if I, if I said something that suggested otherwise.
No, it's fine, thank you.
I have one question, and then I have a statement. Dr. President, is marijuana addictive?
Marijuana does have addictive potential, yes.
Thank you very much for that. I was just curious what you thought of that as a doctor.
Yes, absolutely.
After listening to this fascinating discussion about this, I have some real concerns about us moving ahead and thinking this is okay for our citizens. Number one, it is still in an experimental state of efficacy. Also, if a person enters an altered state for two to four to possibly six hours, and they cannot be retained in the facility until that altered state leaves their body, they can get in a car and drive. What if they get in an accident? What if they do harm to another individual? Let's say that person doesn't have insurance, is there a liability attached to this clinic who steps in and pays? There's many, many, many things, a big chain reaction that could happen with that. There was a statement made today that, well, this drug is being used illegally, therefore we should license it. That is not a good enough reason for me to take an illegal substance, which has been illegal for me, because it is a psychedelic drug that has hallucinogenic properties to it, that is not monitored closely to the individual once it is given. Those each amounts are not set in rule. It's, and I have a lot of heartburn in going forward in this and approving it, when the OHA has not set their rules in stone yet for us to be aware of. And the cost of this, from what I can tell so far, is going to be very expensive, and it sounds like these clinics might be subsidized by the federal government. You said that.
Um, I, actually, because psilocybin is still a Schedule I substance under the Controlled Substances Act, there will be no subsidies from, from the federal government. In fact, folks who are funded by the federal government probably won't be able to engage in this work.
Well, thank you for that. I guess I misunderstood, because you did talk about the increased cost of this, and the difficulty in maybe setting up a site to do this, the high cost, because you'll be fee-based, plus you'd have to charge for the substance, plus the education and the recovery model in this. I think that it, it could be very problematic to go forward. So commissioners, as we move forward on this public hearing, I will entertain a motion. We have, we have two motions here that could be...
So Chair, I have a clarifying question for the, for Mr. Boderman. If, if we, if we move to do this as a ban through December 31st, 2024, does that preempt us from a permanent ban?
Not the way that I read the measure, no.
So we can't actually go from a temporary ban to a permanent ban, if, if we so chose in the future?
Correct. And, and again, just to clarify what the action is, it's adoption of an ordinance for referral to the voters. And so if you carried that through the November 2022 election, you'd have an answer, one way or the other, on the question framed in the ordinance, right? And so, taking your example, it's a temporary two-year ban, let's say the voters approve that, right? That would carry you through December 2024, the way we have it drafted, at which time the ordinance would automatically sunset. I don't read anything in the, in the text of Measure 109 now, you know, state law, that precludes you from passing subsequent ordinance implementing a full ban. Taking a peek in the back, but anyway, I mean, that's, that's typically what, you know, that's, that's our job to advise you. I don't, I don't, again, read the ordinance in a way that would preclude you from doing so, and I'm not aware that anybody else is taking that position right now.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll take a stab at a motion then.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I move we table this, well, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna retract, I'm gonna retract that. Now I realize what, never mind.
Yeah.
So if, if I may, just to clarify on procedure here, because of the direction we received at the last policy session, what we had to do was to draft two separate ordinances. And so technically, a hearing is open right now for a full, permanent ban, I'll say. And what we've tried to do is really give you three general options, right? One being first reading of an ordinance for a permanent ban, the second option being a, a reading, first reading of an ordinance for a temporary two-year ban, and then the third option being to do nothing and allowing the state process to, to play out. And so if, if I'm understanding correctly, if the, the, the potential motion would be to, to move for a temporary, or first reading on the temporary ordinance, let's go ahead and use the first alternative motion to table what's currently being discussed, which is the permanent ban, and move on to discussion on the temporary. Does that make sense?
Great, thanks for that clarification. So I move that we table this ordinance and propose that we proceed with the ordinance declaring a ban through December 31st, 2024, on psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products.
Seconded.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Savas has made the motion, and Commissioner Shoal has seconded that. Commissioner Fisher, you're in the queue.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. My preference would be, well, first, I have a question, and aid of my preference. I'm concerned about the manufacturer ending up on the black market, and I don't know what safeguards there are to prevent that. And since we don't have all the zoning, and those regulations aren't out yet for us to understand, I would be in favor of moving forward with the service center, but putting a ban on the manufacturer in Clackamas County. I see such a need for mental health services, and we have, one of the greatest crises across this nation, is workforce for mental health and substance use disorder. We aren't going to get through this crisis by delaying potential therapies that will work for people. I don't, I'm convinced that the good outweighs the harm with this treatment, and I don't want to see us delayed. But I am concerned about manufacturing in Clackamas County. I would propose that we would amend the motion and proceed with services, but delay the manufacturer.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Fisher. You know, I have a lot of angst of approving something that we don't know what the rules are. I feel like our hands are tied. It, it's just not, I don't think, good public policy to go ahead and prove for the vast majority of, of the county of over 400,000 population, of which a small percentage may partake of this, before we know what's really going on. It's not medically approved, this is not FDA-approved, it's still experimental. I appreciate the advocacy that we heard from today, and the doctors who have studied this, but really, the study of this, I'm seeking maybe more in-depth studies about the side effects, the after-effects, the lingering effects that all drugs have, that all drugs have, and we're just not there yet. And maybe some counties next door to us will have approved this, or going ahead on that, fine, let's see how that works out. But you, the only thing we're doing today is offering it up for a vote of the people. Now, if the vote of the people say no, Nate, what happens?
So what would happen then, is that OHA would be authorized to issue licenses?
Okay, so it would go ahead and be licensed. So what we're doing here today, people, is just asking our citizens the question again, now that more information is available to this. And so if we put this out there, you'll come back with language that'll appear on the ballot. Correct.
Well, we would have a second reading.
Second reading.
So, and, and again, just to clarify, the motion on the table is to table the permanent ban, and so in effect of a, a, a yes vote, would be to, to set aside the first reading of the permanent ban, and then we'd proceed to a discussion on a temporary ban.
Okay, so the, at the next hearing, we would discuss what the temporary ban would be.
Correct.
I stand corrected, thank you very much.
What were you pointing me to?
Well, I, I was gonna say, and if there is any desire to follow up on your recommendation, Commissioner Fisher, to consider, you know, only prohibiting one type of license, being service center or manufacturer, we could do that in the context of, of the subsequent proceeding.
Got it, thank you.
Got it. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, well, I agree with some of Commissioner Fisher's points, and also agree with Commissioner Smith's points as well, in that those points essentially being that the proliferation or the exploitation of the great, the black market, if you will, is a concern. And we, we were told that when the marijuana issue came before us. And what's actually happened in practice is that the, the financial means to regulate the market have not proven such. The black market is hotter than ever, and yet we also have the retail market as well. So it, it has not proven to play out, and I, I don't have any confidence that this is gonna change the market. My concern actually has been that the public, the image or the public perception may be, oh, it's legal, marijuana's legal, so there were, that, therefore, any activity or any, now with Measure 110, any possession of, whether it's, whether it's illegal product or legal product, is okay. And therefore, the market just runs wild. And I think really, if I look at the marijuana experience, that's my concern with this. Though I, that's why I think a two-year, letting the voters decide on a, on a two-year measure, see how these rules play out, and see what instruments or measures that they come up with in the rulemaking or the process, to assure that these precautions are gonna be, you know, come into play for all those things you expressed. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the table.
Chair Smith, could you, I'm confused about the motion now that we've had this conversation.
I'm happy to...
What exactly is the motion again? I apologize.
So, so as, as, as Mr. Boderman explained, the ordinance that we're currently considering is a permanent ordinance, permanent ban, and what the motion I made, and I'll read it again, I move we table this ordinance, that being the permanent ordinance, and propose that we proceed with the ordinance declaring a ban through December 31st, 2024, a temporary ban.
Okay.
On psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products.
Okay, so can I make a comment? I'm sorry, didn't turn my light on. So my vote is a yes for this, we'll say, okay, we're gonna do this, but we're gonna discuss the terms of that at our next meeting, at our next, when we look at that next ordinance.
You, you wouldn't be so lucky, you're gonna discuss it here in just a moment.
Okay.
So it's going to be a little process-heavy, what, assuming there is a, if this vote passes here, what we'll do is we'll close this process, we will open up the, the process for the temporary ban ordinance.
Okay.
Trying to keep this straight. And then you can discuss any changes to that ordinance in the context of that particular hearing.
Today?
Today.
Oh, it's not on another date, okay.
No. Well, i, i, if, if you have first reading of an ordinance on one or the other, then we would come back to you in two weeks with second reading. So that may be the, the confusion there.
Yeah, this is very confusing, because we've never done this like this ever before. Yeah, very confusing. Okay, commissioners, we're gonna go ahead and take a vote on this right now. Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
I'm gonna abstain, I might change it to an aye later.
Okay.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes four, zero, one, or four, one, zero, I believe. Anyway, okay, but I want to take a five-minute break.
Thank you, Chair Smith.
And we're gonna come back, and then Nate, we'll do a sidebar after the break. Thank you. Five minutes, we will return, and bye, thank you. We have now returned from recess to finish this process. And there is a process, commissioners, and hopefully I have it clear, since we've not ever done anything like this before. Tony, would you please read, assign a number, and read the ordinance by title only?
With apology, Chair, the commission would first need to make a motion on that, and then vote on it before I can do so.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, that the clerk read, and assign a number.
I move that the ordinance be read by title only.
Thank you.
Which ordinance? We just tabled an ordinance.
So you...
No, we didn't.
Well, the successful motion was to table the permanent ban ordinance, and then to proceed to consider the ordinance related to the two-year temporary ban.
Yeah, so I second...
That was all part, it was a compound motion, but it was all part of, of the same.
I second Commissioner Shoal's motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Shoal has moved that we assign a number and read by title only. Commissioner Savas has seconded that. Tony?
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
I would have liked to discuss it. I support postponing the manufacturer, but I do not support postponing the service centers. So what am I voting on here?
Okay, you up, you are up next in the script, if you want to make in a moment. You can, why don't you abstain?
Okay, I'll abstain, thank you.
Okay, I'll abstain. Thank you, Chair Smith.
Okay. And you're consistent with your previous vote?
Thank you.
Okay, good. You abstain.
I understand Commissioner Fisher is abstaining. Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0-1. Now, I know, this is complicated.
We'll get there. We're a good team here.
Yeah, okay. Now, any further discussion? And do any of the Commissioners have any proposed changes or amendments to the draft ordinance at this time? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chair Smith. I think everyone knows what I'm interested in, so I would-
Just one point of order.
Yes.
I believe we need to let the clerk read the title, read the-
Oh, okay.
This could go on TV as the funniest of County Commission meetings.
Yes, okay, yes. Alternate language. Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Tony, go ahead.
The ordinance will be numbered 05-2022, an ordinance declaring a temporary ban on psilocybin service centers and the manufacture of psilocybin products.
Okay, thank you. Now I can go to any further discussion. Commissioner Fisher, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Chair Smith. I would propose that we amend this ordinance to include a ban of manufacture but to proceed with the service centers. Do not ban the service, do not ban for two years the service centers.
There's been a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Not hearing a second. The amendment has failed. And I've been told to read this paragraph next, so that everyone understands. The next step in this process is for the Board to consider this ordinance at a second reading. If the Board then adopts the ordinance at that reading, it would only be effective if voters approve the ballot measure in the November 2022 election. The second reading will be Thursday, July 28, 2022, at the Board's regularly scheduled business meeting at 10:00 a.m. Attorneys, would you like to advise us on what's next?
Well, just so we're clear, and we strip away some of the process speak here, what I understand just happened was that you had read the ordinance by title only. There's a majority of the Board that would like to proceed to a second reading on the ordinance. And again, procedurally, you need two readings of the ordinance. That second reading will happen at the July 28 business meeting. If there is an affirmative vote for that second reading of the ordinance, we would then prepare the materials to submit to the voters.
Okay. Commissioner Fisher, you're in the queue.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. So I'm going to change my vote from abstain to a yes.
Okay.
To refer to the voters on this issue.
Okay, thank you. Tony, please note that the motion to refer to voters was unanimous 5-0.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Chair Smith, for leading us through it.
I don't know. It wasn't a very good leadership job, I'm going to tell you. But thank you. That's why we have experts over here. So Nancy?
Yes.
What's next?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Dr. President, thank you very much for your expertise on this, and we may have you back. You never know. All right.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your hard work and the hard work of our experts as well. So next, we do have the consent agenda, and I will have a clerk, please, would you read that agenda?
The Clackamas County Consent Agenda for July 14, 2022. Elected officials, there is one item, approval of the July 7, 2022, business meeting minutes of the Board of County Commissioners. County Council, item one, approval of an amendment expanding the franchise area of a cable television franchise agreement with Comcast. Amendment has a de minimis fiscal impact. Franchise fee is 5% of gross revenues. Funding is through cable franchise fees. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of settlement agreements with Andrea Huffman, Addison Huffman, and Lennon Hinkson. Agreement value is $190,000. Funding is through the County Risk Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of a board order for a zone map amendment related to file Z0439-21-Z, removing the historic landmark zoning overlay on 20750 South Beaver Creek Road in Oregon City. No fiscal impact. No county general funds are involved. Technology Services, one item, approval of an amendment to an, I'm sorry, I'll strike that. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Sherwood for conduit access under Interstate 5 for the Clackamas Broadband Exchange. Agreement value is $23,060.11. Funding is through the Clackamas Broadband Exchange budgeted funds. No county general funds are involved. Tourism, one item, approval of an amendment increasing funding of a professional services contract with Travel Oregon. Amendment value is $300,000. Contract value is increased to $494,210. Funding is through the Oregon Tourism Commission. No county general funds are involved. Health Housing Human Services, approval of an amendment modifying the scope of work of a services agreement with Ride Connection Incorporated to provide funding for specialized service rides provided by members of the Clackamas County Transportation Consortium. Amendment has no fiscal impact. Agreement value remains at $483,913. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Transportation. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a revenue agreement with Care Oregon for the medication for addiction in primary care incentive program. Agreement value not to exceed $162,000. Funding is through Care Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of an amendment to the Behavioral Health Services Delegation Agreement with Care Oregon Incorporated for Behavioral Health Services. Amendment value is $2,182,200, increasing the agreement value to $4,105,546. Funding is through Care Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of an amendment increasing funding to the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for the financing of public health services. Amendment value is $5,029,083. Agreement value is increased to $15,740,170.64. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item five, approval of an amendment increasing funding of the 2022 intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for the financing of community, mental health, addiction treatment, recovery, and prevention services and problem gambling programs. Amendment value is $62,500. Agreement value is increased to $9,646,919.14. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds involved. Transportation and Development, item one, approval of an amendment modifying the registration fees collected by Oregon Driver and Motor Vehicle Services through an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation. Amendment reduces the total fees collected by approximately $300,000 per year. Total fees now projected at approximately $11 million per year. Funding is through user fees. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval to apply for a Safe Routes to School infrastructure grant to fund crosswalk upgrades at Oregon Trail Elementary School. Grant value is $484,960 with matching funds of $121,240. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Transportation and the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of a public improvement contract with More Excavation Incorporated for the Lolo Pass Road Stabilization and Surface Preservation Project. Contract value is $4,113,083. Funding is through Western Federal Land Grant Fund and the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of a personal services contract with Murray Smith Incorporated for construction engineering support services and for the 2022 Salmonberry Drive paving project, Galaflin Boulevard paving project, and Boyer King Road area paving project. Contract value is $218,699. Funding is through the Community Road Fund and the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item five, approval of a contract with Murray Smith Incorporated for construction engineering support services for the 2022 Sunnyside paving projects. Contract value is $309,574. Funding is through the system development charges and House Bill 2017 funds. No county general funds are involved. Item six, approval to quit claim deed equal ownership of Tax Lot 34E2501001 Parcel 00944474 to interested adjoining property owners. No fiscal impact. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you very much, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove an item off the consent agenda? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chair Smith. Commissioner Schrader and I asked questions during our review on Tuesday regarding County Council's consent agenda, item B3, approval of board order for a zone map amendment related to file blah, 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 blah. We received the red line version, at least I received. I don't know if Commissioner Schrader has received it. I received it last evening, I think, after work hours. I was not able to review the red line version. Just got it this morning. We've had conversations with members of the Beaver Creek community. I forwarded what I had to them for some insight this morning. They haven't had a chance to review it. So my suggestion is, if it's not completely time-sensitive, I would like to get to a unanimous yes on this, but I just need some more time to talk to community members. Is it possible, Nate, is this time-sensitive, or Stephen, for us to hold on it? Or does this have to, is there a time-sensitive issue?
I'm not sure exactly what this issue is, Commissioner. Just the whole historic-
This is the lifting of the historic designation of some properties on Beaver Creek, is my understanding.
We had extensive hearing on that.
You have heard it a couple of times. Nate, is it time-sensitive?
It is. We have a deadline of July 25 to respond to Luba. And as I explained on Tuesday, this was appealed. Your initial decision was appealed. We withdrew that decision to revise some of the findings. And so those were the ones that were sent to you yesterday afternoon, and then Commissioner Fisher, you can read them. And so we tried to resend and make sure that you had a copy, but those were sent to all of you and your policy advisors yesterday. But what our requirement is, since we voluntarily withdrew that, is we have to respond back to Luba with the revised decision, and our deadline to do so is July 25. And so it would be possible to push this a week. I think that would give us enough time to still have the decision finalized and back to Luba. Today's the 14th, correct? So it would be the 21st, yeah. So we should have enough time to do that, if you want. I guess I'll just say that the decision remains the same. Really, the justification for the decision remains the same. What we had to do was really two things. One, directly respond to criteria and the administrative rules that we didn't respond to the first time around, but that were incorporated into our own ZDO. So we addressed the ZDO criteria, which mirror the state's requirements. We didn't respond to the state requirements, and so that was an issue and a gap that we filled. The other issue was that we had attached a report to the Historic Review Board, and that report was used and incorporated as your findings supporting the decision. So after we reviewed the objections that are potentially going to be made on appeal, we thought it was better to take that report and incorporate those as direct findings to the Board. And so, again, a lot of the information is really just being kind of moved around and transferred. But again, in our opinion, makes for a more defensible decision.
Okay, there's going to be a scheduling problem with next week, and that these two Commissioners may not be in attendance of the meeting to receive that information and talk about it, but yet we need to act by next week. Can you address that?
Yeah. Commissioner Schrader, what are your thoughts?
Well, my thought is, I guess the reason that we have asked to get more time- Is for the people in Beaver Creek just to have a chance to take a look at it.
Yes, I did. I forwarded it to them, and I got a response. It said, I've been able to read through, like, lines, da, 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 da. But honestly, there's so much redlining here. There's pages of redlining. So this hasn't been part of the, I'm just worried about transparency, that we're listening to the community.
I wonder if, will it change the outcome, though, is the question. Nate wants to respond to that. Go ahead.
Yeah. Again, most of the red line you're seeing, again, I would say, is incorporation of something that was previously included as an attachment. That's not to say that we didn't make it more directed to the potential issues on appeal, but a lot of that information just reflects the discussion that the Historic Review Board already had, and again, that was captured in the staff recommendation. The other thing I'll say is, when we go through the process of compiling these findings, that typically isn't subject to a public review process anyway. The exercise is that you, as the Board, make a decision. We come back to you with the findings, and drafting those findings really aren't subject to public input. We come to you at a public meeting for you to approve those. And so, again, this hasn't been done in a public process because that's not what's typical, I would say, of what we normally do.
So I think it's appropriate to share it with them, but I don't really see a reason then to, I think we should just make the decision and go with it.
So my interest in sharing it with them is to just get their feedback and input to inform, you know, our, my decision and to share with colleagues if there's any other considerations. That's my interest. It's not in creating a public hearing or doing any of that sort.
And it-
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes. It's regrettable that we can't preserve every little piece of-
Yeah.
-history, but we did do our public hearings on this. We were very open. I think we went above and beyond the norm in getting the word out about this property, and we even asked for folks to look at maybe reusing some of the property. And nobody was able to come up with any solutions. And so I recommend we just go ahead and, with this consent agenda, and get it done today.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah. My recollection, when we first acted on this, was what year was that?
You approved it earlier this year.
Earlier, yeah.
It was, yeah, in the spring.
When we first acted on this, that there was, there was no, there was no outcry. It was, I think, almost, maybe it's a strong word to say that the community supported it, but there was no major issues, and I have not heard anything since then. This is more procedural, as I understand it. I understand there's clarification on the appeal from Luba and so forth that we're making here today. So absent any concerns about that, I'm ready to move forward today. I haven't, just haven't heard anything. I'm not, nothing's, nothing about the will or the public aspect of this and what really happens really changes by virtue of the clarification that Mr. Boderman's basically stated here today. So it's not, no change, essentially.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and just respond, because, well, and it's tough when, you know, Commissioner Schrader had a conversation, and the whole Board didn't have the conversation, and then it makes it-
Well, both of us talked to Tammy, and she said, well, I wish we'd known about this sooner, and da, 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 and I'm like, well-
So during the public hearing, there was testimony about it. Elizabeth Grazer-Lindsay, who filed the appeal, who filed the opposition, filed that, and then we changing our findings right now, based in part on what her concerns are, to see if we could address them better in a matter of trans, is that, and that's correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yes, yes. I just want to make sure I'm not misspeaking. And then, in the spirit of that, in order to inform our decision or if there's other information, following back up with her, because there was concern about this, and there was opposition, and there is a process going on. It just seems a little unfair to get someone's appeal and then change our initial pleading. I mean, you're getting what all their concerns are, and it's like, oh, well, we'll address those here. So I just wanting their input, that's all.
Is that true, Nate?
So the way Luba appeals work is if they file a notice of intent to appeal, they don't have to note what their objections are at the time. So we haven't received the formal assignments of error from the appellant at this point. What we did do was we went back and looked at the initial testimony and the initial opposition, and we're looking at that compared to our findings to see if those findings were potentially vulnerable, if they had any holes that we needed to address, which, again, that's what the Luba process allows for. If we do the evaluation, we see that the findings document is deficient, we can bring it back and supplement the findings at that point. It still allows for the full process to go through Luba if the individual chooses to appeal again. And, but the idea being that you could either go all the way through the Luba process, have both sides brief the issue, but sometimes that's just not efficient if you know that there are gaps to fill, and this process allows us to bring it back. So that's what we're doing, is trying to fill those gaps, trying to address those issues. I don't know if they would characterize them as being, you know, necessarily in their interest, because, again, we are trying to craft a defensible decision for you. But I think what it does is it most clearly conveys our understanding of the basis on which the Historic Review Board made their recommendation to you, and then the basis on which the majority of the Board decided.
But Chair, I-
Yes.
I would be okay to put it on next week's consent agenda.
I would, too.
And just give more time, and if anyone wants to reach out to us, we can, and just give the process.
I am, too. I'm thinking of the same thing. Commissioner Savas, we're going to pull this one item, send it, set it over till next week, of what, now if I'm correct, and if I'm understanding you correctly, that we need to take action next week on this.
In order to timely respond to Luba, correct?
Okay, so whoever is present will make the decision next week on what to do, because we have two Commissioners that may be, who are traveling, and their participation may be sketchy. I mean, I don't want to commit, either way.
Sketchy, Chair Smith. What are you implying?
Either way, because you have to zoom in, and we're not sure if the connections are going to be, like, a couple states away. So, okay. So I'm going to move that we set this- So, okay, so I'm going to move that we set this aside for next week for consideration, at which time the people in the community can opine on this. But it's not going to change our previous action, is it?
No, in order to change your vote, you would need to reopen the hearing and take another oral vote.
Which I'm not, I'm not interested in doing. I don't think this board is. Okay, so we're going to set this particular item aside, Tony. It's identified as what in the county council consent agenda?
Madam Chair, the particular item that will be moved to next week's agenda is item three B three, the approval of the board order for the zone map amendment.
Okay, we'll set that aside. With that in mind, I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda. So move.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader has moved for approval of the consent agenda. Commissioner Fisher has seconded the motion. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner, Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much, Tony. Any, or I mean Nate, any parting comments if you want to move on?
Well, I guess I just want to make sure that we're getting you the information that you need, because obviously this was, this was pushed to allow folks more time for input, which again, is not saying that we can't provide for that. I'm not, I'm trying to figure out the forum and how we get that information to you or that feedback to you. Because by next week, I have to have the draft findings. Are you looking for a summary of what certain individuals would change if they had? Or just verification that we sent it out to the CPOs, I guess?
Oh, yeah, no. My interest is in circling back with the constituents that have communicated with us, getting them the information, getting their feedback. I don't think you need to do anything at all. And what I will do with whatever information I receive, or is what I typically do, is I share that with our county administrator, and then he distributes as appropriate to the rest of the commission. So Nate, I don't think you're on the hook for anything. I think it's just a matter of being responsive to the community and wanting to circle back.
That's very fine. Yeah, very fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Okay, let me find out where we were at on this. Okay, next up is public communication. I don't see anybody, but I need to read the script. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of more consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at BCC@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meetings due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. Is there anyone in the room? Seeing none. Tony, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to give some testimony today?
If there is anyone registered on Zoom who would like to provide public communication, please use the raise hand feature at this time, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you very much, Tony. I will now close the public communication portion of the meeting, and we will move on. Nancy, do you have something to say?
I am going to forego the good news today and let Gary do that next week in the interest of time. So I'll turn it back over to you for Commissioner Communication.
Thank you. Now we will go to Commissioner Communications. Commissioner Shoal, you're up first.
Yes, good afternoon, Clackamas County, on this beautiful day. On the Oregon Department of Forestry, all forest areas in Clackamas County are now in fire season. Despite the fact we had the wettest springtime on record, we need to be careful for fires this summer. If you're going to be traveling in the county, learn about fire issues that you might encounter there. KeepOregongreen.org, and also visit the Clackamas County website Disaster Management to learn how to be, increase your defensible space around your home, and also sign up for that emergency alert system. On psilocybin, you heard our first hearing this morning on the, on the subject. Twenty-eighth July is the second hearing, and I hope we have some more constituent input on the twenty-eighth, on that subject. On tolling, ODOT is conducting a public comment hearing on twenty July at one p.m. I hope we can get a lot of people locked on to participate. Go to the ODOT website and look for Public Hearing Registration, Oregon Highway Plan Amendment on Tolling. On the urban growth boundary, the Clackamas County Business Alliance is having a Zoom on two August at twelve noon to talk about the issue regarding the Twalton or Hillsborough Tigard, excuse me, Tigard Urban Growth Boundary issue, where they want to transfer some land inside the urban growth boundary. That'll affect some folks in Clackamas County. So please join the Clackamas Business Alliance for that Zoom. On Secure Rural Schools, at one o'clock, I have a Zoom on that issue, which I'll talk to you all about next week. And a reminder, on nine August, we have the boring and dull days. Please join us in boring at four o'clock for a great time. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoal. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
It's been a long day. I will forego my comments.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
I'll forego too.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
What's for lunch? I will forego. We will have, Commissioner Schrader and I are going to have so much to communicate when we come back from Naco that you do not want us talking today.
Okay, good. I can't wait for that, and thank you for attending that and learning all about counties across our great country. I am going to also forego my Commissioner Communication, and I want to thank all the commissioners for our very long hearing today, but it was very necessary. Not only speaking to us, but anybody out there who'll be watching. It was a wonderful education today, and I cherish these opportunities very much. Hearing no further business before this commission, we are adjourned.